Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at this time. If you would, Madam Clerk, take the roll call.
Certainly. Mr. Braun.
Present.
Ms. Pastnok.
Present.
Ms. Rickle.
Present.
Ms. Sebacher.
Present.
Mr. Schirberdecker.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Here.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
And Mr. Washington.
Present.
Eight council members present.
Thank you. And Pastor Williamson is here to lead us in our invocation.
Our Father in Heaven, we come tonight to keep first things first in our nation. And since we've met in these chambers two weeks ago, we've experienced devastating violence in two areas of our country. Last week in Atlanta, only yesterday in Boulder, Colorado. I want to thank you, God, that you're in the midst of this and these to help these families whose lives are irretrievably broken and changed. I want to pray for those that are helping these communities begin the process of grieving and recovering the normalcy of their lives that will take months, if not years. I want to lift up, Lord, the firefighters who were injured in Atlanta and one firefighter who is missing in action in New York from an assisted living fire early this morning. He entered that building, Lord, without considering his own safety to try to save others. I want to remember Officer Eric Tally in Boulder. He was the first officer to enter that supermarket. No doubt, he saved lives by giving his own. And I think sometimes, Lord, we have to have this brought to us clearly, realizing what we expect of and send our firefighters and police officers into without ever considering their personal safety or their families. They're always putting the lives of others first. And, Lord, tonight, I want to honor them with a moment of silence. Now back, Lord, to our own community. I try to be faithful to pray for our first responders because this could have been our police officer, our firefighters, our first responders. But by your grace, Lord, thus far, you've protected us, and may this always be. But let us never forget, anywhere in America where tragedy strident and where innocent people are harmed, it's not just their issue, it's ours, we're all Americans. Help us, Lord, to be prayerful, mindful, and always caring for those around us. I'm really grateful, Lord, for those who serve this city, both those that are elected as mayor and as our council persons, those that serve this city as administrators and lead departments to provide the city's service. I thanked my trash driver today. I'm so thankful for everyone, Lord, that serves this city and helps us have the way of life that we have every day. We lift up this session tonight for the discussions that will be held and for those from the community that will participate. It's a wonderful way to do the city's business. Thank you, Lord, for those who share. I pray for any decisions that are made that first they'd be pleasing to you and that they would build up and strengthen our community. Finally, I pray for those within the city family who face sheer and uncertain physical health challenges. I've been praying for years for those who are treating constantly. And I continue to pray for those that are chronically ill that you administer to them and love them as only the presence of God can do. For all of this and these and for all that you help us with each day, we are grateful and pray it together and agree upon it through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank Pastor. Okay, next up on our agenda, we have comments from visitors. If you wish to speak to the council, step up to the podium, state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less, please.
I love to break ice. My name is Angela Weeks. I live at 298 Clay Mine Drive. And I notice since I moved from Westwood that Carver Park needs a little bit of cleanup, a little bit of help, and that's what I'd like to address, that we can help that park a little bit.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, anyone else wishing to address the council? Seeing none, we'll move on to our approval of the consent agenda. Council members may choose to remove an item for discussion prior to approving the agenda. Tonight, we have approval of the city council meeting minutes of February 23rd, meeting minutes of March 9th, approval of the DOA report for February, acknowledgement of the following board and commission reports. Looks like we just had the PUB, Public Utility Board, report for January 25th, and the approval of a request from Sarah Painter on behalf of Fulton Public Schools for a senior parade on Friday, May 21st at 4:00 down Court Street. The request has been reviewed and approved by Chief Myers and the administration. Police assistance will be needed. Is that it? Yep, that's it. And I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to approve, remove the DOA, please.
Certainly.
Does your motion still stand?
Yes.
And does your second still stand, Ms. Rickle?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
May I throw an editorial comment in? The Public Utility Board minutes are from 2021.
Good catch, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Simmons. Appreciate that.
We don't want anything to do with 2020. That's gone.
Yes.
All right. So I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended by pulling item C. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Okay, DOA.
I just have one question, and it's probably for Dennis. Keep an eye on some of that, the new commercial building.
That's the new county jail.
Okay. So have we gotten one from the nursing home slash? Correct. Next to the hospital?
No. We'd say the permit has been filed, they haven't come and picked it up.
Okay, thank you. Simple enough, that's all I had, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve the DOA report is written.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Is there any other items to talk about on the DOA report? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. All right, we'll move on. We, next up, we have a presentation of our February financials. Ms. Holzschlag, if you would, please.
This was not a stellar month. I've tried to include everything in the notes that's pertinent. I would draw your attention to the cost of purchased power in electric was $250,000 higher than the previous month. And as we discussed last month and projected, the cost of natural gas was $3.8 million higher. So we have significant losses in the gas department. Electric had a loss month-to-date and year-to-date. Store also had a loss mainly due to the encumbrance for Visasore that inspects the camera lines, $460,000, I think. So we're still showing a slight loss in health that will likely be reversed when I do the accrual entry in March.
Good news. Something.
And the good news is, we recorded the first month of sales tax and
Use tax.
Our use tax, I believe off the top of my head, was about $45,000.
Okay.
Which is good.
For one month.
That's excellent.
For one month, yes, for one month. How's that for good news?
That'll work. That'll be very nice.
And I would entertain any questions if anybody has. Yes.
The Visasore, that contract was paid in full upfront? Is that why they took?
No, the encumbrance was
Ah, okay.
The purchase order was issued, so it's encumbered.
Gotcha. Okay.
That's considered, we've committed ourselves to that, so it's same as that.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy, well, just for, I guess, for the visual and the accounting purposes, the cost for the utilities, will that show a budget variance just for the rest of the year, or will the transfer into the reserve? I mean, that's not going to change what our budget's going to look like. It's, we're going to look like we're way over budget in those two funds the whole year, right?
And expenses, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Unless electric makes it up somewhere this summer, if it would be exceptionally hot.
Yeah, I think that'd be
I don't, I don't think gas is going to make it up.
Darryl, I think you've got a challenge there for you, is you need to make us even by budget by the end of the year.
I don't think
Darryl, Darryl can do it. Don't, don't, don't tell him that.
I don't think, I don't think
You might not like, you might get a few phone calls.
No, expenses, not, not, not from revenue, expenses. Thank you, Kathy.
You might get a few phone calls in it, too.
Motion to approve the financial report.
Second.
And your question kind of triggered a little bit of thought on my part, that should we delineate out that 3.8 million from our budget for the rest of the year, sort of earmark it to the side so that we stay on track?
No.
Is there any way to, is there any way to, you know what I'm saying, though? Since it's throwing those numbers away.
But it was an actual cost, so we have to show it.
We have to show it, but is there a different way to show it that would help us stay on track?
Because you have, you have the same thing in you, wasn't it?
It is what it is. I guess Kathy.
I mean, I'm not an accountant, but that makes sense to me. We took it out of a fund, we took it out of reserves. Do we show the transfer anywhere to where it went, from the reserves to that?
That's part of the expense. I mean, when we expensed that, the claim on cash in that fund went down by that amount. So you don't make an entry to show that.
Right. The budget will still carry. I guess to follow on what the mayor was asking.
I see what you're saying.
When you read a P and L statement, you look at the side and
When you do the future report, just let us know if, without that, if we're still staying on track of where we thought we did.
I think most of us will remember 3.8.
Well, look at the positive part, the transportation cost was still only 220.
220 higher.
Yeah.
A mere bargain.
All right, any other questions for Kathy? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. All right, thank you. Moving on, we'll move on to our unfinished business, our smart grid update for the month.
We've been mainly working on two routes, Route 26 and 37, if I remember correctly. And one of them's Cleewood Edition and the other one's down around Herring. I believe Kathy's getting ready to build one of them, is that correct? So that one's getting ready to build. On the two, probably on the average, they probably averaged about 95% reads. We did meet with Anixter and about getting their scanning machines and going and scanning the meters in to get rid of the database errors. They gave us a pretty high price to rent them, lease them, whatever. So being from Missouri, we decided we'd build our own. So we got a barcode reader and we got a laptop right now, and this afternoon was the first attempt. And talked to Pat Craighead, it went well. It's a little cumbersome since we didn't really buy anything, we used what we had. But he was averaging about 40 meters an hour this afternoon getting those in, so that's, that's where we're at.
I was just going to say, before he goes too far, let's make sure we can get him into the system.
Yeah, this afternoon is his first attempt, and we'll issue him in. It worked on the benchtop, so this afternoon, we took it in the field. Any questions?
Very good. Now we'll move on to Parks and Rec discussion, or Recplex discussion, I'm sorry. Who wants to report on that?
All right.
Rock, paper, scissors?
I saw a video one time.
I saw the floor, I could report that.
Yes, I drew the short straw. We're, we're getting very, very close. City staff is over there, finished up pulling wire for all the security, audio, visual, data. Right now, we're just working on connecting it. So we've pulled in some other departments, some more manpower. We're going to start working on that tomorrow morning. Hopefully, we'll get that hooked up in the next couple of weeks. We still have to get phone service and internet service to the building, so that's, that's something we're waiting on, working with the different companies for that. Cardio equipment's supposed to be here next Monday, so we're kind of excited about that. And the fitness equipment should be shortly after that. So things are going pretty good. We've hired a facility supervisor, his name is Luke Shellengoski, and he's going to be here April 12th, full-time. So we're, we're getting very close.
With a lot of recreation experience.
He does, he does. He's fairly young, but he's got some experience. Got experience working over at Jeff City at the Link, their new rec center. He's worked, he's originally from Springfield, he's worked at some rec centers in Springfield, has some banquet experience, conducting different banquets, things like that. So I think he's going to be pretty good. When he gets here, I'll, I'll bring him to the council and introduce him to you guys.
Are people able to sign up for memberships right now?
We are, we're working hard on that. Right now, we don't want to, we want people to be able to see what they're getting. So we're kind of waiting. I think once we get that fitness center component finished out, all the equipment there, I think we can, we can sell it. We are starting to schedule different events. We have the Fulton High School Senior All-Night Party scheduled in May. We have the South Callaway Senior All-Night Party scheduled in May also. And then some other people are starting to talk to us about different banquets and receptions. So we are, we are taking that, and I'd say, I think by the 1st of April, we'll probably be in a position we can start taking memberships.
Projected date?
I can't say April 1st. I'm, I'm going to go mid-April, mid-April. I, I think that's a reasonable time. A lot of it depends on how soon we can get the phone service there, because we depend a lot on different companies to get that. And we've met with several companies. Kyle could probably add more to this than I could, but we've been in several meetings. We got to find, we got to find a way to get phone there, we got to find a way to get Wi-Fi in there and internet. So that's, those are all kind of complicated issues, but we're, we're working through that.
One thing we are kind of worried about and thinking about and talking about is cell service is close to nonexistent in the building.
Lots of metal.
It is very difficult to make a phone call, a cellphone call, if you're inside that building. So we're looking at, to see if there's any type of little repeater or a little indoor antenna we can put in the building to get you outside.
They make them for residential, I don't know about commercial, I'm sure they do, yeah.
We, we had to place that at St. Mary's Audrain, now Audrain Community Hospital. We had to place those in there because of the age of the building and the materials that were used throughout the building and the different additions. We added those in it greatly.
So does it take one per carrier?
Yes.
So you'd have to have one for T-Mobile and one for AT&amp;T?
Well, depending upon which, which ones you get, there, there's lots of opportunity, but yes, the technology is there that would allow for cell service to, for the facility building not to interfere with cell service.
Yeah, and in our limited understanding, we had, we had an individual in yesterday. He toured the facility, talked about different places to put Wi-Fi hotspots, and then he also talked to us a little bit about having those cellphone repeaters. He said a lot of it just depends on what towers are close, as far as what they can do. So he's, he's working together, he's putting together a quote for us, and hopefully we'll have that in a couple of days.
Socket is on the hook for getting internet to the building, phone and internet service, the backbone, if you will, to the building. Clay and I both have been in, in conversation with them as well as Darryl. Darryl initially set that up, and so we're, we're optimistic that in the next few weeks, they'll, they'll get that backbone into, into the building. I think as far as door security-wise, flipping over to door security, I think we'll be in pretty good shape in a couple of weeks. Buildings and grounds is chipping in and helping Clay's folks, and I think their, their first task is to attack all the door security and then move to the, the phone system in the building. So then after that, we'll, we'll look at that Wi-Fi. The way I'm looking at it is, we get the building secure, we get the phone system. When I say that, that's, that's all the office requirements. So anything needed for, for the computer systems and, and the phones to work, get those going, and then, then we can get Wi-Fi established. I know that's going to be very important. You know, one of the, one of the topics we talked about was, you know, Wi-Fi, using the Wi-Fi calling feature instead of, instead of the cell service, depending on how many, what, what functions in there, you know, what bandwidth we have coming into the building. I know Socket's going to provide us a pretty good bandwidth in there, so that's another element to it.
Kyle, is Calabite available?
It's
Over in the, in that part of town?
No.
I don't think
I don't think so.
Calabite comes in the city limits.
Yeah, it does.
They are inside the city limits, but they're not to that area.
I have it, I have it at my house.
I don't think they're over there. I mean, I'm not saying they couldn't get there, but I know Socket is relatively close and are doing a build out there already, so.
And I was strictly thinking from somewhat of a local Callaway County
Right.
company, but if they don't have lines and stuff, they're probably not going to run it. Just for that.
So is that why all the white locator flags are in the ground over there?
Could be. I know that we also, Darryl's folks, the utility guys are looking at, at putting the lighting in to the parking lot, so the poles are in for that. Darryl informed me that they may begin, begin as early as this week and next week on, on installing that lighting for the parking lot in front of the building as, as well. So depending on where their flags are at, if they're, if they're along the building and around the perimeter there, it's probably for the electric guys.
Okay, thank you.
We did get the new flooring down, too.
Yeah, we didn't mention that, it looks really nice. If you haven't been over there to look at it, the floor looks 100% better, so.
I think I said, didn't I say, anybody pick the video of it?
We got a video, yes.
That killed me.
Yeah, the video doesn't do it just so, it really does look phenomenal, really great improvement. All right, any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen. We'll move on to new business. Gary Bott's here to talk about the Morelson Microbrews event.
I didn't get to do this last year, so. I'm a little, I'm a little dusty on how we're going to do this, but first of all, normally I would have came earlier in the year. Normally, I do this in January and address the council to kind of give any concerns, what, everything that we're going to do. But with COVID, we didn't know if we were even going to be able to do it this year. I had talked a little bit to Bill earlier, about a month ago or so, and we didn't know. And then we come up with a way of making it safe as we can. And this is why I'm here to answer any questions as we go. So first of all, we've limited, normally that's about 2,000, 3,000 people come to this for the beer part, it's a big crowd. So this year, we've limited to 600 people only. We're selling tickets online only, and we will not go through money exchanges that you're coming through with the beer ticket section. The beer will only be on the 500 block, is how we're going to mention that and spread everybody out even more. That's one of the things I've asked the fire chief and as well as the police, Chief Myers, is about taking on Fourth Street. We've never taken the footprint any bigger, we've always kept it pretty close, because it's only a four-hour party on the street, so with the Morels and so, but we want to spread everybody out, so we want to go over to kind of where Lulu's is, well, to Fourth Street Nichols and, and existing where we've always been. So it's always been up by the Playhouse, all the way down, taking in Sixth Street to Nichols, down Court, and then that's the, that's the same day, this is May 1st, by the way, that's the same day the farmer's market's opening back, back up. So that'll also be closed at 1:00 anyway. The only thing that we're doing is closing off that one, we were asking to close off that street that's by Lulu's, that's kind of gives us some more place for food vendors to sit over there and spread people out. We're also doing glasses, we normally do little glasses, it's hard to make the pores, do a little save, so we're going to full pint sizes this year. You have to buy a ticket, you can't just show up that day to do this. You, we're already, we're going to be sold out well before this event. I, I, it scares me, but yet, I'm ready to go on. We are trying, and we are looking at every aspect, we've, in constant talks with the Health Department here in county, they're aware of how we're doing it. This year, we do have the VFW guys, that's who's going to fry all my, instead of just the volunteers that we've always had in the past, and not everybody's done that. It's hard to get people, so these guys know what they're doing. So and then plus, they have worked with the Health Department as well, so we're working back and forth constantly with the Health Department. They're busy with all COVID stuff right now, but we are, and they are aware of what we're doing, and they're, they're backing us up as well. So basically, in a nutshell, we're going to have live music that day, the K Brothers, Bernie Sisters will be back in town, open on the street. I'll need a little electricity for that, usually don't take much. Guys, electric department usually know what I'm doing and do it really quickly the day before, and trash receptacles for all the mess that we have, so we don't have a mess. And it's, as you see, I don't know, it says here, yeah, scheduled from 12 to 4:00. So we'll be shut back, we'll be open, the streets will be open back up at 4:00 on that Saturday. I don't know if I went through everything. Bill asked me and said, make sure it's going to be awesome, or tell everybody it's going to be great. I'm here to say it's going to be great, I'm going to do my best to be so and do everything I can. I didn't want to, I didn't want to go another year without it, just because we had a momentum going with this festival, and I, if we just do a smaller and just keep reminding everybody, I think we can do it and do it safe. So I guess I'm here to entertain any questions you guys have.
Breweries all over the state know about you. I mean, that's kind of one thing my wife and I do, is go to breweries.
Yeah.
And it's like, oh, you're full, that's Morelson Microbrews.
Yeah.
We're going to be there. It's like, yeah, good deal.
I, I, I've received phone calls from Colorado, Texas, Oklahoma, already. Are y'all doing it? We're going to, we want to come, so, you know, and that's the things that you, you feel like you're going to turn away so many people, but we have to this year. But at least we, we got the spirit in it, we, we know. I, I, I'm still so fortunate, we live in Callaway County. We never, we've been good, everything's worked out well. I don't want to be the guy who starts a pandemic here, though. So, and it's, it's, it's me riding on this, and I am, but I'm, I'm just want to make sure you guys are aware that we're going to do the best we can to keep everybody safe. We're going to have signage up, and I think by that time, the way I see it, I've already got my first vaccine, and I think we're going to be in good shape by that time, and I'm ready to go. So like I said, is there any questions you guys have? Because it's been a year, I'm, I may have to remind myself how to do it, so.
Gary, we appreciate you. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The, the fact of anybody putting on an event right now or in the near future is a risk.
Yeah.
A financial risk, as well as a health risk.
Yeah.
But, but we need those things to start happening. So thank you.
Oh, I, yeah. Well, thank you. If, 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 you know, if you guys, I mean, I assume, I feel horrible because we've already started this thing, in fact, and I'm asking for permission to do so with about $5,000 of people's money in my account already, ready to go, so. But I, keep in mind, I did talk to Bill, and I think he had maybe addressed or sent some emails out to some of the council members. So I didn't do this in free will and, and thinking that I wasn't respecting the, what conversations we'd have here tonight.
So Gary, the, the one main change is, I guess,
Gary, the, the one main change is I guess the, the block off of Fifth Street from Court to Nichols. That's, that's something new?
That's the, the only thing new. Normally I kept that open so people could roll on. But you know, one year I was wishing I hadn't, just for the mere fact, the band kind of set right there in that area. So there's really no way no one could utilize that road anyway. So this does kind of give us more room. I think as we're going to put the food vendors down there, I think our band's going to be down there by in that, in the intersection sort of right there in Fifth Street and Court.
Do those residents have been notified?
They will.
Okay.
I apologize. The, you know, the merchants and we, we do have a thing and a lot of the merchants and then the people who own businesses, buildings downtown, we'll probably let them know. I just got these posters today. They'll be going up and we'll try to make, make sure the residents that do, do live into downtown. Yeah.
The residents was my focus because I, I figured with the, the Brick District and the merchants and they all would know, but it'd be the residents it would be.
Sure. And unfortunately, we haven't had a meeting in a year, the Brick District. So it's kind of all been like emails and this and that. Tom Riley has resigned as president because of the Playhouse and he's taken on that role. I was vice president. So I did call a meeting, first meeting we've had for a while to try to get business underway. It's just, we just haven't, I mean, there wasn't much to do.
Thank you, Gary.
Well, thank you.
Gary, you're, you're, I can appreciate everything you're doing. But are you, are you going to man all of the spots in places where people could enter? Or are you going to funnel them through one location to get them into?
So, so basically the only place that we're funneling or maybe if we want to use that word would be the, the ticketed area where you drink. We have to do that to make sure you're 21 years old. We have to make sure you have the one, the tickets that you got in there. We're then going to ban you to know that because we're going to ID you because anybody can buy a ticket online. That's the thing with what we're doing this year that we've never done before. So we are going to have the entryway of coming into Court Street. We barricaded somewhat. I will ask some barricades. So that way, but we're going to have bigger tents and several lines. So people were not just all together and they'll come in and that's where we do. But we still have to allow people to walk from the Fifth Street up to the Playhouse area because that's probably where we're going to fry the Morel's is up on the bank parking lot because it's a flat area. And people tend to want to just walk around anyway. We're going to keep the vendors that are non-alcohol outside of that. So hopefully people just kind of meander around. But yeah, we will have to funnel through those 600 people.
So the 600 could, could realistically be a little bit higher?
I'd say much higher because of the Morel's. I, I do feel that in, and just going by times in the past, you know, this thing has grown from a little bitty thing to a huge thing. And it's really hard to kind of comprehend. A lot of people there to drink beer or what have you, to taste the beers of Missouri, you know, outside. But also there's come a lot of people come there just to buy Morel's. They want nothing to do with the alcohol. They just come there for that. So that's, that's what we're doing. I mean, we actually discussed using the park down here, coming to council and maybe just doing the mushrooms down here and the beer up there. But what happens is people are going to get lost. And you know, if I'm, if I'm going to any gathering like there or an event, I won't be able to see where I'm going and say, hey, there's where that's at. So we're going to have good signage. So people, if they do want to go to somewhere else, they're going to walk straight to that area. But I'm, I'm assuming, yeah, we're going to have-
So my question is, are you shooting yourselves in a foot by limiting it to 600 people?
In the ticketed area for the beer? Possibly.
If you're going to have people right next to each other, are we, are you shooting yourself by doing this?
I, I know that's been discussed, but I, I, I think once, I think these things are going to be sold out in the next two weeks. So we're going to be able to just say, we are out of beer tickets. There'll be no longer that, but you're welcome to come. And I, I understand. We're already going to, but I'm going to try to descend. We actually have talked about one side of the sidewalk is where you would make your drive walk up. So like say the west side of the Court Street sidewalk would be where your avenue would be to, you know, like we're going to put like footprint lines or something.
Right.
Where people, this is where you get to go up there and not walk out amongst the beer vendors. Because we're going to have the beer vendors basically be facing the interior of the Court Street back and forth. And hopefully we can get people who are not participating in that just to walk up the sidewalk. That's how our, our focus is. And we were going to just use like yellow tape to kind of guide the way and say, don't go in here. Where normally, you know, I don't care who you are, everybody's age is in that. I mean, it's just all over. So, but yeah, I mean, and this isn't ever evolving, by the way. This, this, this is evolving all the time. We, we learn things every day. We change things. So, but as far as the glasses and how many tickets, that train's already left the station and we're only ordering, I've already ordered glasses and that's what we're going to stick to.
Hey Gary, how you prevent people from bringing their own alcohol? How about bringing their beer?
Well, here's the deal. I think you're full if you bring your own beer. I mean, I, I can't ever stop people from bringing their own beer, but you're only doing samples. We're not sitting there drinking a whole beer. So I guess they want to pour their one little sample all day. I mean, I can't, I mean, there's a lot of things I can't stop in a situation like that. I mean, there's going to be people that we always tell them, do not, we don't let them go into Bex and I have that control and walk out with a beer. I can't control other people and where they come in and where they go. But I think the majority of the people that I've seen at this fair are there to taste the, all the different breweries from all over. And that, and they're there for that. It's $35. And you know, and why would you want to pay $35 when you can do it right there? You know, I'm just saying, you've already paid. You get all you can get in four hours.
I understand.
So I, I don't, I don't see, you know, I think they're full if they bring their own beer. They got better beer here. So. And there'll be some distilleries as well, craft distilleries from our state. Dog Master Alchemy will be here and there's this really, really good one out of Kansas City. It's called Lit of Spirits. They'll be down too. So you can also sample there. And there'll be wine for those who don't like the other two. So.
Motion to approve Morel's and Microbrews as discussed.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. And just talking about distilleries, those are the folks that if you remember back during the start of this pandemic, they switched from making their sales products to making hand sanitizer.
We're not drinking that.
Well, no, let's not drink that. It smells pretty bad, but it, it was a great thing that they did. We need to recognize it.
Yeah, you wouldn't want to wear that or like you get pulled over and you just sanitize yourself and you're like, what's going on?
I'm surprised somebody hasn't made one with that name on it, a beer.
It's probably out there somewhere.
Yeah. We do have new, a lot of breweries have opened up, you know, since, so we didn't have, we were here two years. So it was last year, the year before. During that pandemic, I'd already, last year, we already had new ones that were coming out of St. Louis that were really good. And they've got so many, I mean, they won the big, the national beer awards out in Denver and they'll, they'll be here this year. And they're out of St. Louis. So some new guys coming in town. We're not going to have as many. So.
Gary, now you say you purchase online? So where do you go?
Yeah. So you would go thebrickdistrict.com, Morel's Microbrews section. You'll have a digital. So it's like, that's how your ticket will be digitalized. But even though here's, you know, we're still going to check your IDs and then we're going to ban you. And then, like I said, this year, the only weird thing, normally you do sample glasses. We are, and it might be cumbersome for people to carry around a pint glass. But you know what? That pint glass works better later on in life and they're covered, I think. I mean, I'd rather have a big glass. The little juice glasses are awesome though. So.
Very good. Do you have a motion and a second? Any other discussion on this? Hearing that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Favor, pose no.
No.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
So that was seven and one. Yep. Gotcha. Okay. All right. Council of Concerns. I'll start with Ms. Reclu.
Councilman Stone?
No concerns, Mr. Mayor, but just two community things. One, I've had the pleasure of serving as the council liaison for the Safe and Affordable Housing Task Force here in the community that we partner with CMCA. And just, just as a quick update, that, that group is still very active and we had a great meeting this afternoon, included representation from Fulton Housing Authority and different members of the community as well as the task force. And this past year has, has hit those, those who were already struggling, those who were already experiencing homelessness or at risk for their housing were even more at risk this last year. And so just know that there was still a whole lot of work and a whole lot of just benefit that this community did in terms of taking care of our own in this last year during all of that, on top of everything else that was done. And there's still a lot more that we can do and we will be doing. But this group is still doing a lot and, and busy and focusing on that, that population that are, that are most vulnerable and at risk right now. And then the second is just a shout out to, to Noble Health. The St. Mary's Audrey transitioned last Monday night to, to Noble Health Audrey Community Hospital. And I've gotten to, to work with the leadership of Noble Health and they have this community so much in their hearts and their heads about what they're going to do for Fulton, Callaway County and Mexico and Audrey. And we couldn't ask for a better partner. We, we, we were, we heard some smoke a couple of years ago, but what we're getting now is the real thing. And so just wanted to commend them on what they're doing for our community.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Moving on. Councilman Schibberdecker?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Councilman Washington?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. It's been brought to my attention that possibly this COVID shot, maybe if we can put the, reach the low income in the areas of the, over in the west side at the M H C P meeting that I attend, they show the interest if they could be any service at all, providing the facility at Guiding Light Missionary Baptist Church, having that facility, Captain Jackson's church there. Or possibly we have our, someone mentioned maybe down at housing in that area, maybe we can reach a lot of our tenants there to come and get shots, especially when they have the Johnson and Johnson with that one shot. Or I don't know if that's out yet or if it made it to Walgreens or someplace where we can say, tell the health department, if you get this in, maybe we can provide a service. That's the only thing that they brought to my attention that they'd be interested in doing.
Excellent. Yeah. Sounds like maybe a phone call to the county health department and offer that may, they may take up on that. Thank you.
All right.
All right. Councilman Pastner?
I have nothing. Thank you.
And Councilman Braun?
Yes, I have two things this evening. First off, I know I was not available to do the ride around on looking at roads and, and what we were and weren't going to do. Do we have a list of those? What's going to happen and what's taking place with those?
Yeah, we're going to do, I think, about $250,000 of basically chip and seal. You can come on up. We did have a meeting here. We are going to put 10th Street back on the to-do list.
Yeah, John, what I have permission for right now is exactly what Bill said, the chip seal portion of it and then 10th Street. I do have a list of, of what, what the folks, what everybody who drove around and looked at, and I can supply that to you at any moment.
We'll get that out.
Count, excuse me. Is West Minister, I've seen the roads are starting to break up pretty bad, the concrete there. I know you put some temporary stuff. Are there any long range plans of doing some changes there or not?
On specifically West-
Up in that area, up in, from National Guard Armory, all the way up to, I guess, to the highway.
To the highway?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we, we remember kind of where we put that asphalt stretch there. We, we milled off some of the existing concrete and put an asphalt. Pretty, pretty long patch, you know, this, this past year. And so we would like to do, you know, more than that eventually. And I know that's a pretty important, important road to us. But, but yeah, we're, we're watching.
We get tons of traffic.
On the white line, there is a guardrail. And there is a sinkhole that is happening about this much into the road from the guardrail.
I'm aware of that and we need to get on that.
It's very dangerous.
Yeah.
Very. And we're talking, I mean, if a car were to drive, which would be easy to do because it comes so far out from the guardrail into the street about this much, the asphalt edge, then it would unneedy. Wow.
I will, I will visit that again tomorrow. I, I know that we are looking at that and we will address that as, as soon as we can. Every road is on our list. It's just where it ranks on the list. We survey, every three years, we survey the roads and we have three different people rank them and, and that helps us build our list. So that way if somebody calls in and says, you know, you haven't touched my road, I can typically tell them when we did it last time and what it ranked as and maybe the reason why. And it may not make them happy, but at least they, they know that we've seen it.
So my, my question is maybe it's more for Bill, but we were budgeted, if I remember correctly, much higher than that, were we not?
We had about $600,000 in the budget.
So we're cutting $350,000 out of the budget?
Yes.
Why?
Because that's, that's money that the utilities will not have to transfer to the general fund. And so that'll be just people to leave that money in the, in the utilities, specifically hopefully there in the gas. You know, as we, we, we had an unplanned $3 million expenditure. And so we're just trying to leave some of the money in that, that fund to help replenish that account.
I, I, I guess I don't agree with, because if we cut back this year, 350,000 and we had 600 in the budget, are we going to budget 950,000 next year?
We might. I, I can't guarantee that though, John. I, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know.
We're, we're cutting out something.
It depends on how much we want to, we want to recover and restore the gas fund reserves.
If I go back to 10 years to get it there, I think we should look at a longer term to get it back to that.
Okay.
I, I just think $350,000 in cutting out of our roads is a huge, huge number when we have roads that need help and need work. I'll leave it at that.
I agree with Councilman Braun. I think we need to have a longer and more detailed conversation about those capital expenditure savings that, that were proposed, but hasn't necessarily been adopted yet.
We had a utility board meeting yesterday and the utility department is working on those numbers as to what our existing reserves are and where they should be. Didn't offer any, how we're going to get there, but they're working on those numbers. So next meeting, meeting after that, we might see some information from the city as to what we really have.
I just, I, I know at the last meeting or the meeting before, the utility board had brought a recommendation to replenish those reserves within three years.
Yes.
And that was not something that we agreed to. And many of us weren't in, in agreement with that necessarily, that recommendation.
There wasn't a lot of discussion.
Right.
Okay. There wasn't a lot of, this is how the board recommends you do it. So.
Understand.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, we need to have a longer discussion and be in agreement about what we're going to do with replenishing that and what timeline and what it will defer.
Part of the discussion, even though it's not directly related to each other, is the fact that we aren't for sure what we're going to get back on COVID money. The second round of stimulus offered municipalities like us, I think they allocated 2.3 or 4 million for us. But that comes with strings attached. So we don't know that we're going to get that money. We think we will, but we need to kind of let that play out a little bit more and kind of see really where- bit more, kind of see really where the city of Fulton will stand throughout this pandemic.
Nor, nor do we know what the strings are.
We, we kind of do a little bit, but we're not quite there yet. So, we'll, we'll know more over time on that. So, that, that does, should affect our decision-making.
I guess I just would like to, before we say we're not doing any more, look at other avenues like Councilman Stone says. And look, let's talk about it a little bit more and not just cut $350,000 out of what we all need in our roads and streets to stay functioning.
No, not really, Dan.
Ma'am, that's not how we do it here. I'm sorry. You can contact the city council via email or phone during the week, weekdays as well. So, I'm sorry. We just, if we let you do it, we'll have to let everybody talk out loud when they want to. So, thank you.
And then, the other, the only other thing, the other thing that I had was, did we ever move forward with the farmland at the, oh, landfill? I hadn't seen anything more on that.
Well, that's good. We worked on that just, just today. That's going to get advertised, probably going to be in the newspaper in the next week. It's, we, what we did is we, I grabbed the Yato contract and made some changes to it and then had Courtney kind of do a review of it too, to see what the, at least the contract. And then, we'll, we'll be looking at an ad. And the ad will just say, hey, come in and see, see a copy of the contract. The contract is going to have, you know, that they're going to be responsible for the, all the fencing and that we want it mowed and we want some trees mowed and we want, you know, if they want water, that's going to be, what water's going to be up to them and that kind of thing.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. Councilman Baller, Simmons?
Yes, sir. The airport. We have pretty much all the hangers rented. But we have some of them, four, five, six sort of hangers that are being rented by people who are not flying. The airplanes are not certified. There's at least one or two hangers where the airplanes are literally in pieces. And they've been that way for a while. I don't think we intended for the hangers to be storage facilities. I'm wondering if there's something we could do to turn over these hangers so that we get flying people in there, flying planes, using the fuel, using the airport as it's intended.
Has the board talked about that at all or?
They have, they have talked around it, yes. There have, there hasn't been much, I don't know. Kyle probably is better to explain it than.
Yes, we have talked about it to, to a degree, enough that I, I do have somebody tracking, tracking those and have sent out letters to those folks just to make sure that they are aware that we know that they're not flying and, and aren't utilizing the airport like, like we would like them to. Part of their lease does give us the ability to strip them of their hangar if they're not actually, if they don't have an aircraft that is fly-worthy. And so, our intent is to give them a heads up. So, we just don't, you know, and inside of a month, say, you know, hey, get out and get somebody else in. But that's the direction we're going. We, obviously, what'll generate more revenue out there is more people flying and using gas. So.
And then, we've got another meeting next week.
We have a meeting, we have a meeting Tuesday where we can talk about this, this very subject again.
Yes.
Okay. I think that's a fair thing to ask. I mean, they're paying the rent, but yet that's, you know, not really the motive to have them there. We want them there to be active. And so, yeah.
Those are the, the brand-new hangers are that way?
Not the brand-new ones, the old, I don't want to say old, but the existing hangers.
Okay. So, yeah, we'll wait to hear back if they have a recommendation for us. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Councilwoman Sabeckers.
Not a concern, but a shameless plug if I can. We're hosting a blood drive at the John C. Harris Community Center on April the 13th. And we are in desperate need of pre-event registrations for that. They're all done online, redcross.org. And we have to have a certain number before we can actually hold the event. They're doing antibody testing for COVID. So, it's a really good opportunity to not only do the donation for the goodness of it, but also for the science of it. So, I would love for any of the council and any of the community to register.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, to add to the shameless plug, there is still a requirement for convalescent plasma for recess treatment for patients that are severely ill with COVID. And so, all of that, people who test positive for the antibodies still give blood. Then that plasma is used as a treatment for patients with, with COVID. And so, all of that leads to, to great opportunity.
Get out there and give, guys. Very good. We'll move on now to resolutions. Councilman Braun, if you would present Resolution 3396.
Mr. Mayor, before you continue, I would ask that I recuse myself just due to a conflict.
Oh, with the housing? Yep, fine.
Resolution.
Do you want me to leave?
No, you don't need to leave.
Is it okay if I stay?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Resolution 3396, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to execute a contract with the housing authority of the city of Fulton, Missouri for the provision of supplemental police services. I make a motion, we approve Resolution 3396 at this evening's meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 3396. Is there any questions or discussion on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have to say that I was on the housing board for 26 years and very beneficial for us to have that. So, I'd like to see this continued.
For sure. Chief Myers, anything to add or?
No, I was just going to add that Director Sabeckner and myself met about three, four, five weeks ago. We looked over the contract and we both agreed to continue services for the housing authority. I think we've developed a very good relationship and we work very closely together.
I think all the years I've been here, everyone raves about that program. So, that's great. Appreciate it. Thank you.
It's been a very successful program over a number of years. And I think it benefits all of the city of Fulton when we control things throughout the, the city, but also in the housing area as well.
Yeah, I'd like to say it's very beneficial when I was there. It's just great to have an officer available that they know our tenants. Well, they know your tenants in now. But anyway, that's it.
All righty. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We do not have ordinances tonight, announcements. We have Election Day coming up, Tuesday, April 6th, 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM at our polls. Get out there and vote. The next city council meeting will be Tuesday, April 13th at 6:30 with no work session due to the newly elected officials. And then, we also have our 20th Annual Clean Sweep, which will be held Saturday, April 10th. You can register online or in person here at Parks and Rec. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Thank you.